Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Monday, January 3rd, 2012. Happy New Year, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Arletta. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we need a motion to appoint our vice chairman for 2012. And I believe this time, that rolls to District Two. So if someone would like to make a motion to... We have a motion by Mr. Bowman to appoint Mr. Arletta, and a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting a ward of a bid to purchase a generator and transfer switch for the emergency operations center. Our presenter is Don Ash, Director of Emergency Communications, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year to you guys. This is the generator for our new building at 526 Industrial Boulevard. We seek bids for it, and this is the lower and recommended bid for this project. The funding will come from our capital and capital expense as well as our impact fees. And this is for the new facility.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving this, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to SPOS, we have a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for additional work required on the Flippin Road at Pates Creek Box Culvert Repair. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Project Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. Flippin Road at Pates Creek is designated as SPOS Three Transportation Project. Originally, the scope of this work was to repair wing wall. You can see it's a picture there. It was to repair the wing wall, that it was broken. And it was leaning, and it was pulling the face of the wall. You can see that in the drawing where kinda the dimensions of what it was, the wall was broken as well. During the construction of installing the micropiling, we encountered a lot of volumes of water. As soon as we started digging to install the micropiling, a lot of volume of water going under the wing wall. When we saw that, there was three things that we saw when we started the construction of the repair work. That was one of the major things, large volumes of water going under the wing wall. The other thing was a crack on the top of the box culvert where water was seeping through. That's the top of the box culvert, and water was leaking like if you had a faucet not completely turned off, just constantly dripping through. And this picture shows the water going on, coming from behind the wing wall. And then the other item that was encountered during this, when we started the construction or the repair work, was also a lot of honeycomb at the bottom face of all the walls. This is an existing box culvert that is a 10 by 10, triple box culvert. The water from the Pates Creek goes through. When we encountered this, we went ahead and contacted Public Works Director Terry McMichael, and he went ahead and contacted Mike Clemens with Georgia DOT to come and looked and inspect the issues that we found. Mike Clemens quickly looked at it. He came the next day after we called, and he strongly advised that this had to be repaired as soon as possible. We contacted the contractor to give us a price to do this repair work. In fear of us losing the road due to the large volumes of water going under the wing wall, we went ahead and approved it. We're here to request for the change order of $45,850, and we do have the amount in account.
And I know, Pates Creek, there is a huge amount of water. It's surprising at how much volume goes through that culvert. And not being an engineer, is a culvert really what's needed there? Or is it, would a bridge serve a better function? At some point, is that going to have to be replaced?
I believe with this repairs that we've done today, we probably have another five to 10 years of life. Above this box culvert, there's another box culvert that we built on the Pates Creek Road on the SPOS Two a few years ago, about five years ago. But even above that, there's a reservoir that is Clayton County. So there is a large, like you mentioned, there's large water, volumes of water coming down through this area. Right now, since we've been kind of on a drought, it's not a lot of water coming down. But it is, for it to be a triple 10 by 10, that's pretty big. And of course, the next thing would be something like a bridge. But of course, we would have to keep monitoring this. GDOT does inspect this culvert every two years, and we will keep them informed of our repairs. They wanted, Mike Clemens, he wanted us to provide all the information involving the repairs and the locations, so they can have it on their file.
Well, it sorta goes back to the conversation we've had before, and Terry, on this one, is that going forward, there's going to have to be some type of maintenance fund set aside for repairs like this and road repairs. A lot of our roads are newer, but you know, we've certainly gotta keep an eye to the future as far as putting some money back for things like this, because I imagine a bridge would be, what, a million and a half, maybe?
Yes, and this, yes, yes ma'am. Even replacing this box culvert, you're looking at 400 to 500 just to replace the box culvert, and then also the inconvenience of the public, because it's a pretty good busy road. And like I said, you know, we're probably gonna gain between five and 10 years. One of the things that we found, that it was hard to see when we started doing the design, because myself and Terry, we went out there and looked at the box and prior to starting the design, once we put a cofferdam on to start the repair, there's a good, what, 3 by 3 inch hole between the walls. And water was coming from one side of the box, from one barrel to another barrel. And that's not good, because what it's doing, the steel that is inside is being corroded, and that's one of the things that we have here to repair, including in this change order. We have to go along all the walls and chip the bottom foot, because it's all honeycomb, and you can see the steel popping out already. It's corroded. It's in pretty bad shape. But like I say, I think with this repair, we can probably gain five to 10 years, and planning ahead for the future and included to do either replacement, either a box culvert or a bridge.
Does any board member have another question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I just have one for the county attorney. North Georgia Concrete, I've worked with them in the past, especially Mr. Alan Hart, the president of this. It's been a long time. I just, the name is extremely familiar. Do I need to recuse, or do I need to be involved?
You don't have any present, ongoing...
No, ma'am. I do not have anything at this time, but I have in the past.
No, sir. That does not qualify as a basis for accusing. You can vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Holder?
First question I would have, and really the only question, is with the inspection that our people have done through our engineers, GDOT has looked at it, why did we not determine this is the scope of work initially, rather than having to come back with a change order?
Well, one of the things that we did in the initial inspection was trying to find out, we understand the wall is leaning, and there's a reason for it to be leaning. Of course, there's loss of material. So we did try to find the source, or where's it coming from? It's coming from the inlet. And we tried to put some dyeing, dye, like food coloring, on the inlet side, but we could never find coming out on the outlet. So it was hard to figure out without doing any actual work to see why is this wall leaning? We know it was leaning. We know there was water going under, but we knew that the massive amount of water was coming through. It was hard to predict.
And just like in the slide or the picture that you showed us earlier about the crack in the floor, that didn't just happen.
That we knew, that is included in the original, the cracks, you know, repairing this...
There's a picture you showed on the crack in the floor.
Yeah, that was in the original, and also stabilizing the wing wall with the micropiling, and also we did some helical anchors. We also secure, we secure that wing wall vertical and horizontal, so that wall is not gonna, is not gonna go anywhere anytime soon.
I'd like to add a little bit to that if I may. One, before Rocky put this out to bid, we met out there with the engineers, and I myself went out there as well and put on a set of waders, and we were trying to figure out where the water was coming from that was going under the box. We found on the front of the box that they didn't build a toe wall down, and there was a hole up under there that was about three and a half feet deep, back up under the box. So as best we could from there with probes and literally sticking my hand up under there and feeling around, trying to find where the hole was, we thought that that was the source of the water coming up underneath the box. So when the original contract was set up, we did have grout being pumped under the box at certain locations. We did have a pattern, and had in the contract to pump grout in the voids. So we thought, as best we could, that we would put a toe wall in the front and then fill all the voids under the box. So we thought we had it set up. And then, like you said, in the original included mending the wall and attaching it back to the box. Well, after we got out there, and they sealed across the front and put all the water in a far box, and actually built the toe wall in the front, they started excavating for the micropile, which is on the outlet end of the box, which is on the opposite end from where the water comes in. When they did that, water started flowing out from under the box. Well, it just told me, if the water's on the inlet side and it's coming all the way underneath the box, where we put the toe wall didn't seal it up. Where we thought it was coming from, it didn't come. So we had to do a lot of exploration and drilling and try to find the voids where that water was coming from. So it was one of those things that we didn't, we just didn't find. We thought we knew where it was coming from, but we sealed that hole, and obviously, there was another one. So once we did that, of course, we felt like we need to seal it. So I honestly don't know what else we could've done initially to try to find it, because we did everything we could. We had two different engineers initially, even a year or so before that, I had CMS out there as well with some dye, and we actually put some pockets and let it go up under the box to see if it was coming out in different places. It's just very difficult to determine where that source of water was coming from, you know, because there's rock there too, and that even complicated it a little bit more. So it was just one of those things. I can tell you, we worked very hard to try to find that out.
And I understand, and I hope you understand the reason for my question, though, because after, you know, we had signed the contract, and then we come up with change orders based on, and I understand that things happen, but I think the people need to know why these things happen too. So, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Arletta?
To the extent that we now are more knowledgeable about how or why or what, what are we going to do to take a look at other box culverts in the county to make sure that with this additional knowledge of what, you know, we gained, that the others aren't in the same state or becoming, getting ready to get in the same state and back to the chairman's position of having some maintenance programs? But I don't know if this is unique, or really unique, or if this is something that, I hate to see us wait till it gets to the point where this one was falling over and whatever. If there's other issues of missing toe walls or whatever else that you mentioned on the others, that we do the same thing before, get ready before we end up with the kind of additional costs that we're now incurring.
I think one of the things on this box culvert was built back in probably late 60s, early 70s, so I know anybody, nobody here knew how they built that, but of course, everything that we built that since Terry and I've been here, we always put toe walls on the box culverts, and that's definitely gonna stop what happened here from happening over and over. And I know GDOT provides DOT and myself every two years a book of all the bridges and box culverts, anything over 20 feet. If it's a box culvert that is 20 feet longer, they will inspect it, and they'll provide that information to us. And based on that, that's one of the reasons this was included in the SPOS Three, because of that report. And of course, anything that maintenance DOT sees, we'll look into it and make sure that doesn't come to an extent like in this one.
I can tell you now that there is another box culvert in the county that we will be seeking funding on on repair. It's got a wing wall problem much like this one as well. But these are identified and inspected by GDOT every two years. Every two years, they send us a list of what needs to be corrected on each of these, whether it's a bridge or a box culvert. If it's something that we can do internally, we go ahead and correct those. For instance, we recently put some sway bracing on a bridge in District One to get the ratings back up on it, metal sway bracing. But some of these are pretty expensive, and like Rocky said, this one was planned to go on SPOS Three when we initially set it up. We knew that it was gonna be expensive, so we set it up. So this, as Chairman Mathis said, this is a never-ending process that we know that these bridges are gonna require maintenance, and there's gonna have to be some funds, I can assure you, set up, you know, on a regular basis, you know, to take care of these. We've been fortunate in that the last bridges that we've been replaced, we've been replaced in our SPOS program. So this would've been Foster, Crumley, Lower Woolsey, East Atlanta. All of these were identified as maintenance projects, and then were, you know, and some other bridge replacements repaired been under SPOS. So to answer your question, we've been doing it under SPOS. So how we continue is gonna be a source of conversation, I can assure you.
Can I also say, as far as funding is concerned, we had talked for quite some time about the potential use of stormwater funds for this. We have an RFP out for the restructuring of our stormwater ordinance to where it could more, where stormwater funds, where applicable, can assist us in this type of funding and improvements.
Well, definitely on these box culverts especially, I would think that that would apply from stormwater perspective with the impervious services that we've added to the county over the last 10 years of our growth period. It certainly has increased the velocity and volume of water going through these culverts. So hopefully, we can move that along pretty quickly before we have another issue with the one that even Terry is referencing.
Are there any other questions? Excuse me, questions or comments? Mr. Arletta?
If that's the case, is there any possibility of taking this 48, 45,000 out of stormwater and saving it for my SPOS funds?
Not until we do some changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to approve a supplemental agreement for additional emergency work on Flippin Road and Pates Creek in the amount of $45,850, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Arletta, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to financial services, we have a resolution requesting an amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Asset Manager Master Agreement. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and that's Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. About a year ago, we came back before you and created or started our second go-around with the NSP program. We started, we went out for bid for asset managers. We got, we approved four of the asset managers, three of which have been working since that time. The other one was Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, and Ms. Melissa Chapman, who's the president, or I forget the title, director or whatever, has been dealing with us for a while about adding a amendment to this contract that would allow the Habitat for Humanity to be an asset manager in this program, just like they are in Clayton County. So we've reviewed the amendments, which basically what it boils down to is, is a different, is another, excuse me, funding source that people can use if they otherwise wouldn't be able to get a standard 30-year mortgage, that if they were so low in area median in income, they could possibly qualify for the Habitat for Humanity program. And this allows the Habitat for Humanity program to be a financing source for the NSP program. And that's what it boils down to. It basically allows Habitat for Humanity to act as the, I guess, mortgage holder, if you will, for these people, and then, you know, we'll get paid for the house upfront. We'll get a portion of the money, and then the rest over the life of the mortgage, which is basically what we do on the other side of it too, except for we get the majority of our money upfront. This will not be the majority of the money upfront, but it will, in the end, pay itself back to the county. And we're here asking you to award the amendment.
Are we doing this for one, two, or three? NSP one, two, or three?
For one and three.
One and three.
Yes.
Okay. And what's the total, what's the total amount that we received for one and three? So one was 6.2?
6.4 million, 6.2, yes, in that neighborhood. The other one, NSP Three, we got two awards, one from HUD and one from DCA. I wanna think they're like 1.8 million combined. One's like 1.2, and the other one's like 600,000, I think. And I'll give you an update too, while I'm sitting here. We have currently purchased in all the programs 92 homes, and we have sold 72 of them. We have 20 currently in inventory, and of the 20 that we have in inventory, three we just purchased. They have not even started rehab. Five are under rehab. Six have finished rehab and are on the market for sale, and the other six are under contract. So of the 20 we have, only 14 of them are not under contract. And of those, we've done like a laddering effect where we got six ready, six or five getting ready, and we just bought three more because we just had three or four sell in the last week. So we're trying to make sure we don't ever get out there 30 houses with none of them under construction. We're just trying to make sure as one falls off, we bring another one on. And we have seen, you know, we've had 92 houses so far that we purchased and 72 that have been sold. So we're really, we're really doing very well. We've been recognized at the federal level. The Director of HUD has mentioned Henry County's name in several meetings that we've been in attendance to. And the state of Georgia says, the DCA Department says, if you want to run your program right, you call Henry County. And we've actually had several counties and cities call Henry County to get a footprint of how we're doing our program. So we're doing really good with this NSP program.
Very good. Well, thank you for your work on this. Does any board member have a question? Mr. Stamey?
Mike, I think this is a great program. First of all, I want to tell you that I think the Habitat program is great. I always thought the NSP had that income limitation, that we had to sell so many homes below the national average. That's built into the program, I think.
Yes, sir.
The 50% of the income of the property, okay, they're gonna pay you on the anniversary. Let's say the anniversary's today. You've got 12 months in the rear already, so you can get 50% of the 12, correct?
Yes, sir.
And who is the servicing agent behind Habitat? Is it a HUD, or is it DCA? Who is, who funds y'all's program?
We do.
So y'all will be servicing your own loans, correct? In other words, if the money comes over, y'all service your own loan.
Could somebody come up to the microphone in case we have some more questions? That way, everybody can hear. Thanks, Melissa. Thank you.
Y'all service your own loans, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you never bundle and sell?
Absolutely not.
So this would be a 30-year payback into the program?
Yes, sir.
And this is also an income source for the program too? So the program has to reinvest that money back for the next 30 years, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have to set up an accounting program that will track this for 30-plus years. What happens on the default side? If somebody has a default, does a home go back to HUD, or does a home go back to the NSP program?
The home comes back to Habitat, and we therein put another family in. So that funding is continued to be a source for the county. And we have, we have had that happen in the past, where we have foreclosed on a family who did not meet their obligation.
How does that affect the silent second that's involved, if there's one involved with the family?
The silent second, there's a couple of methodologies that we use or program, financial layering, so to speak, to get our families into a home. For instance, we have, as I had explained to Mike, a grant from Federal Home Loan Bank that will offer, say, up to $20,000. That second silent, if a family defaults, goes away, only if the family sells the home prior to that, that maintenance of affordability timeframe.
Five years or seven years?
It depends on the program. Typically, it's going to be between five and 15 years, depending on that layer of sourcing, correct?
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Which is pretty much the same. I think ours is 10-year maximum on the, if somebody borrows 25,000 as a soft second, they've gotta stay in the house for 10 years prior to being able to sell. So this could be a little longer, but you know, the payback period for the Habitat is longer as well, so.
Does Habitat allow the individual to ever sell? Let's say the individual stays in the house for 10 years, their second went away in seven, so they have a vested period now from seven to 10. Can they sell that property outright to an individual?
They can, provided that their mortgage is paid off to Habitat.
They have to pay it off at closing?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the income restriction would go away to the new owner? If they sold to somebody that was in a higher income bracket?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
Two, Mike, this does fall within the guidelines of the Fed, right?
Yes, sir.
There's no issues that we would have with that.
That is correct.
I know that I went over to Iron Gate Community, I believe it was, over in Clayton County, and there were 70, plus or minus, homes that were, actually had rehab work and kept people in their homes. It was a program put on by Wells Fargo.
That's correct. We received a grant from Wells Fargo in December. It is the second round of grant funding that we've received from this financial institution. And of 170,000, 90 of that is coming to Henry County.
Yeah, we're gonna receive approximately $90,000, and we're looking at Habitat for Humanity. I'm not saying we, but Habitat for Humanity is looking at some areas on the north end of the county to try and, to try and, you know, basically stifle the foreclosure and that, to bring the neighborhood, to bring it back or stop it from going any deeper in. And I think it was really a good program, learned a lot about the program over that period of time. The other thing is, is, Mike, on the money situation, we get part of it back upfront and then 50%? What part do we get upfront?
Well, let me show you an example of how this would work.
That's, okay, that's okay.
This, basically, let's say that we heard that Habitat went and acquired the house. The house cost $70,000 when we acquired it. We put $30,000 with the rehab in it, so the total cost that we could sell this house for is $100,000. And we cannot sell a house for one penny more than we have in it. So this would not make money that way. So the purchase price would be 100. That Home Loan Bank soft second, if you will, is $20,000, we'll get upfront. The DCA Home Funds, we'd get upfront, that's another 20,000. So the first mortgage would be $60,000 for 30 years, and we will get 50% of each year's mortgage at an anniversary date. So we won't get 12 monthly payments, we'll get one payment a year for half of what that mortgage payment is.
Right. And this money is siphoned and put right back into Habitat for Humanity program, right?
Well, it's put back into the NSP program, new homes, and just keep the cycle going.
It's also important to state that these are homes that are, in this particular case, I don't know if it's every case, but homes for people that make the lower income, number one, who are extremely hard to get qualified, in the open market, probably impossible to get qualified, and that it's a part of the program that we have to adhere to, due to federal standards that we have to adhere to in this, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, with, Wells Fargo had put 170... So, I mean, with, with, Wells Fargo had put 175,000 in the Clayton County side the first time, right?
Yes, sir.
And then they put another 170,000 this time, which 90,000 is coming into Henry County, which is, you know, I mean, that's, that's private sector at its best to come in and really join with the county and with the, with the feds in this case, to help alleviate some of this problem and restore some hope to keep some in their houses at the same time, being able to take care of stifling for better termin- lack of better terminology, the, the neighborhood even going down worse.
Right.
So I, I see it more as a win-win for Henry County and, you know, the, the 30, you know, the 50% over 30 years, I'm sure that there's a lot of questions, and Commissioner Holder may even have one on it, but I, it, it still, it's, it's the lower income family that, that is tremendously hard to get qualified to get into a house.
That's correct.
So I, I just want to bring that up and ask that question about that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, on the other side, benefit too, is it keeps the other property values from continuing to spiral downward, which has been such a challenge for the county the last couple of years, as we have faced our budget each year with declining, with a declining digest. So yes, there's a win-win in it, definitely. Mr. Holder, did you have a question?
Just a question, um, to, to really, for, for clarification for myself, as well as the people that might be watching, uh, unsure. The entire NSP program is funded by federal funds and grants, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So the, the point I want to make with this, we're talking about the 50%, this, and stretched out over a period of time, that this does not have an impact on the general fund or the local tax budget. Granted, in, in those that say, well, federal funds are my funds, and they're exactly right, but they are not tied to the taxes that we will levy right here as a county. I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Aletta?
Uh, Mike, the program that you just showed of the silent second and zone, is that just associated with the Habitat program, or is this for all programs?
This one is actually tied to the Habitat for Humanity program. For example, we can look at the other side of it, same thing. We acquired for 70, we put 30 in it, so we have $100,000 in the house. And basically, we'll, we'll talk about NSP one. NSP one, 6.4 million dollars. We have about $3 million that, once that, once it's, once we expended the money and got the money back and it's program income, we would spend $100,000 of the program income to purchase and rehab this house. We would then put it on the market, somebody would come and buy it for, let's say, $100,000. That $100,000 would be a payment back to the NSP program, and then that person would have a mortgage. And if they have a soft second and they don't live in the house, or they try to sell it or they leave, then that soft second is due back to the NSP program. It's, none of this has anything to do with the general fund. So for your, for your question, we would get back all $100,000 of our investment, or let's say we would get back 100,000, but we gave a $25,000 down payment, second soft second, so we'd have $75,000 of our money back immediately. And then if they manage to live in the house for the full 10 years, then that 70, that 25,000 soft second goes away. So we would net $75,000 on the house. In this scenario, we would net 40 and 30, 70,000. So it's about a $5,000 difference between the two programs. This one just is a spread out over a much longer period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you an amendment to the NSP program asset manager agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, and I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Bowman is there, second. Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning services, this is a public hearing, an ordinance to amend Chapter Four Site Design Standards for the Purpose of Creating Section 4.02.02 Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Roads Connector Overlay District. Our presenter is Breka Johnson, Planning and Zoning Services, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. Yes, since the approval of the Livable Centers Initiative Study for the Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Roads Connector in July 2010, staff has been working with our consultant group at the time, who was Tunnel, Spangler, Washington Associates, to create an ordinance that would include all of the comments we'd gotten from key stakeholders, our zoning board, staff, to come up with some guidelines for how the quarter should be developed in the future. The code includes a purpose and intent, uses allowed, open space requirements, some basic development standards as far as minimum lot size, lot area, house size, things like that, and architectural design as far as brick, stone, stucco, what type of landscaping is necessary. And we've also included with your packets a listing of all of the responses and questions we've received from key stakeholders, from our zoning board members, and then the staff as well. I also wanted to thank each of you Board Members for meeting with staff on December 19th and 20th to kind of give, allow us to give you a brief overview of the code, as is our introduction of the code to you, for you to review. It is a little lengthy, but the purpose of this meeting is just to kind of, kind of a feeler meeting, to get some feedback from you all, so that we can get back with our key stakeholders and let them know the process and where you all are headed. Just as an overview of some following dates coming up, we do have a zoning advisory board meeting on January 12th, and we will include a comprehensive plan amendment. On the 6th of February, we plan to bring the comprehensive plan amendment to you all at the workshop for informational purposes only, and then we'll bring both official documents, which are the LCI code and the comp plan amendment to you on February 14th. The zoning advisory board did approve the code on November 10th, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Okay. If not, this is a public hearing, and so at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to this, this creation of the Section 4.02.02 Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Road Connector Overlay District LCI study. Could we, you know, I think we should need to come up with a longer name for this.
Absolutely.
Okay, there are no comments now. You, this is an action item. You do want us to take action on this today or don't?
No, ma'am, this is actually for informational purposes only. The intent was, we didn't want to bring the code directly to you without, you know, with the holidays and not give you enough time to review it. So following this meeting, if you have any questions or comments, we'll take that to the key stakeholders and kind of bring them up to speed with what's been going on, and then move forward to you all in February.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments, suggestions, or anything from the board? All right, and you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, we have another public hearing, and this is an ordinance to amend Section 2.04.01 Parking and Storage of Major Recreational Equipment of the Unified Land Development Code. Our presenter is Bert Foster, Building Department Director, and that's Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. When the ULDC was adopted back in 2009, it contained a provision that prohibited the use of recreational vehicles to be used as dwelling quarters outright. After some discussions with members of the community and the board, staff was instructed to go back and revisit this prohibition. Staff identified three different circumstances that may warrant allowing RVs to be used as dwelling quarters. Those are a catastrophic event, such as a fire, a flood, a foreclosure, or any other event that may displace a family. The second one is a temporary visitation. And the third one is for situations where a primary structure is either being built or renovated elsewhere on the same property, and because of that construction, occupying that structure is impractical. What staff is proposing is an initial 30-day approval by administrator upon receipt of a written request by the applicant. Up to two 90-day extensions may be granted by the administrator, with any further extensions coming from the county manager's office. At any point, if there's a, if there's a denial or extenuating circumstances, the applicant will have the opportunity to, to appeal any decision to this board. And I'll be happy to answer or try to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Does any board member have a question, comment? Does this adequately meet what we had requested? Mr. Aletta?
Um, you mentioned foreclosure. How is that going to work as far as allowing them to do this if the home has been foreclosed?
Not so much as staying on the property, but if, for example, a family member loses their home and has to come back to and live with another family member, give them that opportunity to get their affairs sorted out without having to actually dwell under the same roof.
Okay, so it's, okay. And then the other question was, why two vehicles, allowing up to two vehicles? It seems like we could be creating an RV park or something, having these parked unless the size of the lot or the land that they were going to be placed on, and I don't see a restriction as to how many?
Yes, yes, sir.
How big a lot it has to be to have two versus one?
Well, the thought there was, in the event that whomever owns the house may already have an RV that they own, the person who's coming over may also have an RV. So there could be a situation where there's up to two on there. We wanted to, in fact, we tried to prevent creating the, the image that we're creating an RV park by limiting it to only two, giving the, the current property owner the ability to own an RV and keep it on site, and whomever is coming over to bring their own RV.
I think the neighbors with one alone in their neighbor's yard to start with, and bringing a second one could bring issues. And again, without any restriction to the size of the lot, that one versus two, and I would think that it still would have to follow HOA rules for allowing or not allowing this one trump that, I would take it.
Yes, sir. And the HOA, whatever their regulations are, they'll, they'll police that.
But, but if you allow two, is the HOA going to be trumped with this ordinance?
No, sir. HOA, covenants and restrictions associated with HOA, they would take precedence over, over what we had in place. I mean, our, you know, our code would be what our code is. So if our code allows for up to two, but the HOA only allows for one vehicle, then that's an issue between them and their HOA. They have to work that out.
Some HOAs allow zero, that's why I'm just going to want to somebody coming before us and saying, for the ordinance we're allowed and HOA doesn't, covenants don't. But still a little concerned with allowing two on a small parcel, a third or half acre of land and having two of them sitting in the front yard.
Well, they, they should not be in the front, they should be in the side or rear yard.
Side or rear, okay.
That's covered elsewhere in the, in the ULDC.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, let me back up. You can park it anywhere on site for 24 hours for loading and unloading. After that 24 hours, it's got to be moved to a side or rear yard.
Mr. Holder?
Well, I know I was vocal about the ordinance when you first brought it up, and I just want to commend you on, on a job that has made this ordinance much more palatable for me. And just like we were talking about, two vehicles, something, the first request, somebody's going to have three guests, you know, that's going to happen.
Yes, sir.
But at least we're headed in the right direction, in my opinion, and I just want to commend you for, you, staff, or whomever.
Thank you.
For, for, for heading us in the right direction and coming with something that's much better than what we had the first time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to call for anyone who wishes to speak in reference to this ordinance amendment. With that being said, if there's no further questions from the board, you have before you an amendment to Section 2.04.01 Parking and Storage of Major Recreational Equipment for the Unified Land Development Code, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. You also have the next item, which is an ordinance to amend Appendix B, Administration of Building and Technical Code, Section 103.1.1 of the Unified Land Development Code, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Six.
Yes, ma'am. Appendix B of the ULDC lists certain building projects that are exempt from the building permit process. Currently, a one-story structure that does not exceed 120 square feet does not require a building permit. It has been brought to staff's attention that we probably, that we should research into including whether or not it'd be less cumbersome to the public to include one-story portable structures regardless of the square footage, to add those type structures to the exemptions list. The resolution before you includes an additional line item to exclude portable structures from the permitting process. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Again, Bert, this, this addresses an issue that, that I know you heard the last time we discussed this particular issue. We require a permit if you built a 12-by-12 structure on your property.
Yes, sir.
But you could go to Lowe's or Home Depot and buy one, bring it there, and no inspection was required. Is that not correct?
Provided it was under the 120 square feet.
Okay, I, I used the wrong, 10-by-10, okay?
Yes, 10-by-10, yes, sir.
10-by-10. I said 12 by 10. See, you would be required, now you're not. Is that correct?
That's right. It's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, because the structures like you're talking about, the building aspect of it is not an issue. It's prefab, and it's not on a permanent foundation. Some concern comes in when you're dealing with the physical location on the property. The ULDC requires them to be in the side or rear yard, out of drainage easements, out of buffers, out of stream buffers, so on and so forth. And if there's no review, when it initially goes in, you know, there's a chance that somebody may put it in a, in a drainage easement and cause problems elsewhere. But the fact that it's a portable structure, it's, it should be easy enough to move once it's discovered.
Any other questions? Mr. Staney?
Bert, if that portable structure that was purchased on Lowe's was set on a concrete slab, what does that do?
If it's greater than 120 square feet, it would need a permit.
But if it was just 120 square feet, it still wouldn't require a permit, correct?
If it's, if it's 120 square feet or less on a per- it's, it's, it does not require a permit regardless, whether it's on a permanent structure or not. What this ordinance is doing is allowing any structure that's not on a permanent foundation and under one sto- or under two stories, one story, does not have to go through the permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bowman?
So it's, uh, what do you call in a permanent foundation?
Slab?
So, in other words, they can haul it out and sit it on a slab, and if they decide they don't want it anymore, they can pick it up and haul it someplace else, because they haul it out and set it on that permanent foundation. I think it should be attached to it in order for it to be a permanent.
Right, attached to a, I'm sorry, is that not, I believe that's what it?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious, because you can buy these, you can buy the 12-by-8 teams at Home Depot, and you can have it shipped out. It's actually more personal property than it is anything else. And you can set it on a concrete slab, but you can also decide you want to put it down on your property at Jackson Lake or somewhere, and you can have it picked up and taken down there. Still, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know that I agree with the, with the fact that it's just because it's sitting on a concrete slab, it's got to have a permit. Now, if you got to permit the concrete slab, that's a different story.
And that's, and that's actually the way it's required, it, it reads in here, established with or attached to a permanent foundation.
So if, I mean, you, you know, to, to, you know, permit the slab that it may sit on, maybe that's, maybe that's a different story. But from the standpoint of it being a, a permanent structure, just because it's sitting on concrete, even if you fasten it to the slab, you can still unfasten it to the slab and take it with you.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't.
Ideally, we would have permitted the slab beforehand.
Sir?
Ideally, the slab would have come in for a, for a slab permit when it was built, whatever it was.
But the building wouldn't require one, because it's just going to sit on it.
If it's not attached.
And you can move the building off of the concrete slab and put two basketball courts, goals on each end and play basketball on it, it's no longer a building.
Right.
It's just a concrete pad.
Right.
I think that's. I think that's cumbersome. I mean, if you buy it from Lowe's, it's not a permanent structure just because it's sitting on a concrete slab. I disagree with that. It's a structure that can still be picked up and moved to anywhere. If they moved it there, they can move it someplace else.
So you're saying that on the portable structures, you do not want the 10 by 12 or 10 by 10 restriction? You would rather on a?
It's still, it's still, it's still a building.
A temporary, a temporary.
It's a portable building, but it's, I mean, it is what it is. If you can buy it from Lowe's and you can have it delivered, just because you sit it on a concrete slab, don't make it a permanent structure.
See, the concrete slab creates the issue, not the building.
But the slab has to be permitted already.
So if you permit the slab, then why do you have to permit the building that's going to sit on the slab? Now, if it's built in place, that's different, you know? I understand that. It's like a metal building that I recently built. I mean, we've permitted, we put it on a concrete slab, and you could take it apart and move it, but that's not feasible. But, I mean, when it's bought, it's already assembled, which is, I think, part of your concerns earlier. You know, why should it be a 10 by 10? When there's not that many 10 by 10s at Lowe's. There's a whole lot more 12 by 8 teens. It's one single carton of wipes that can be brought out. And true, they're probably not going to ever move it, but, you know, I disagree with the bet. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Auletta?
In reading number one, I don't see where, I mean, you've removed the 120 square feet for a portable. Nowhere in number one does it say if it's greater than 120 square feet that it has to be permitted, if it's portable. And it is portable by the definition that Commissioner Bowman said.
Right.
Because it's sitting on a slab, it's still portable, right?
Yes, as long as it's not.
And if it's lagged down and can be untied, it's still portable. I'm trying to work through the language here to see whether, in fact, it really needs to be changed because if the word portable is just the fact that it came in and can be removed, whether it's lagged down or whether it's sitting on top of it, to me, it's still portable and it still fits the definition, not requiring a permit. I'm saying I read it that way. If that's not the intent, then Commissioner Bowman's concerns may be there. But if that is the way it's read and that's the way it is, then it sounds like over 120 square feet doesn't require a permit as long as it's still portable.
That's correct. That's what we're, that's the amendment to the ordinance we're doing. Any structure that's portable, not established with or attached to a permanent foundation, is no longer going to be required to have a building permit.
You're saying not attached to, but again, I'm saying it's still portable even if it's lagged down. It can be unlagged, as Commissioner Bowman mentioned, so that still makes it portable. Yes or no?
Lagged down, attached to the foundation.
Commissioner, I believe the way we've defined it in this particular ordinance is, if it's attached to, if you take that portable structure and attach it to a permanent structure, in this case, a slab or permanent footings, then that, in essence, makes that a permanent structure. I see what you're saying. Can you then, what would prohibit the property owner from detaching that portable structure and moving it somewhere else? Bert's right, you know, the issue comes in with the slab, you know, put that permanent structure in place to make sure it's not going to encroach on any setback lines. We've had conversations with the health department as well, making sure they're not installing the permanent structure on septic lines, within drain adjustments. So, you know, I think the original thought was that they'd be installing this permanent fixture to, you know, in incorporation, you know, along with the shed or the structure itself. You know, but you're right, someone very well may have a slab sitting out in their backyard that's been there. Ideally, that's already been permitted, and we know exactly where it's located so it's not encroaching on any setbacks or with any septic lines. But you're right, you may have a case where an existing, if it's an existing permitted slab, and they want to come and put a portable structure on, they can take on and move off, then that, again, that may be the one case where it bumps heads with this ordinance. But I think, you know, we're trying to make sure we captured everything to prevent someone from coming in, putting the slab in, in a location, attaching the structure to it, and then that slab is located in an area that prevents it from being moved later on.
When you say attached, are you, again, just placing it on top of, is that attaching it?
No. If it's just sitting on top of it, it's not attached. If they come back in and actual, secure and anchor the structure onto the slab, then that would be attached in this case.
My thoughts were quite simply was that they should permit the slab because that's going to say where they're going to sit it, okay? Whether the slab's a basketball court or you're going to set a temporary structure. I don't think they should have to permit, I think they should have to permit the slab, and they should have to show it because of everything, stream buffers, you name it, I mean, there's a lot of issues. But at the end of the day, to turn around and have to then permit setting a structure on it, and I'm talking about one that's a pre-built structure like we're talking about, a Lowe's or Home Depot, then turn around and have to permit that? I mean, that's where I have the issue. Because you can, there again, I mean, true, it is attached when you, you can drop some epoxy anchors in there and bolt it down, right?
Right.
Or you can take a ram set and shoot it down.
Right.
But at the end of the day, you can take the bolts out and pick it up and move it because it was, you know, it's pre, it's not pre-constructed, it's an already constructed project. I have no issues with permitting the slab because the slab's going to tell you where you can put it, and I have no issues with that. I just have issues with basically a double permit by permitting something that, you know, if we want to do that, we need to just disallow them to be able to leave and sell them because, you know, obviously, there must be something wrong with them because we're asking our inspectors to go out and look at them.
Right. And perhaps we can amend the language to address, make sure we have an assurance that that slab has already been permitted, you know, as long as it's on a permitted slab, then if it's an existing permitted slab.
I have no issues with that.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can kind of go back and amend, now if you want to try to amend language here, amend it and bring it back to the board.
Well, I mean, hey, I'm the only one that, you know, that's really, I mean, you might want to let it go to vote first, but at the end of the day, I don't.
It's a good point, you know, certainly it's a good point, you know?
Yeah. But I have no reason to permit the slab at all.
Thank you. Mr. Holder?
If I could, I'd like to recommend to the staff to, that this be tabled until the language can be acceptable and presented to where everybody agrees that, of the direction we need to go. Very similar to what we did in the previous ordinance change, and I think everybody was agreeing with those changes. Just a suggestion.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if someone would like to make a motion to table this item, we can bring it back. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're almost there. You did great. I mean, this is good. We're almost there. We want to get it right.
One for two is pretty good today. Five hundred.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, an ordinance to amend the Unified Land Development Code to add section 4 dot 01 dot 09, outdoor lighting standards. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and that's exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, board members. A few months back, or actually, over the course of the past several months, staff has received numerous inquiries regarding issues related to outdoor lighting principally at commercial sites. Back in October of 2011, staff came to the board just to kind of present, as a discussion item, to present this issue and to get some further direction from the staff. At that time, the staff was directed to look into it a little bit further, do some more research into the issue, and find out more information, and bring a recommendation back to the board. Coming back to you this morning to do just that, we've gone through, we've looked at a number of different jurisdictions, and we've looked at a number of different industry publications to kind of get a better idea of outdoor lighting regulations, both in Georgia and throughout the country. And staff is proposing that the Unified Land Development Code be amended to add the aforementioned section which specifically addresses outdoor lighting. Now, some of the key elements of the proposed ordinance include, all non-residential site plans submitted must provide evidence of ordinance compliance, that'd be in the form of a photometric grid, lighting specifications, things of that nature. Exterior lighting shall be shielded and directed downward. It establishes measurable light intensities within the site and at property lines that can be measured, and foot candles are in lux, and establishes regulations for freestanding pole lighting and building-mounted lighting. You know, what we've done, the way the issue's been handled in the past has been typically, there'll be a, you know, a common typical condition would be, you know, all lighting on the site should be downcast with moderate brightness. You know, moderate brightness is somewhat subjective, and, you know, what this ordinance proposes to do is to actually put some tangible parameters on what the lighting intensity should be. It utilizes a, you know, we can use a, it's a handheld device, a foot candle light sensing device. We actually have one, our facilities maintenance staff, they maintain one. And you can actually take a measurement of where, what the light intensity is throughout the site, throughout the parking areas, as well as at property lines. What we're proposing in this ordinance is to actually establish certain light intensity levels principally at property lines for buildings, you know, for properties. We allow for certain intensities within the parking areas, but as it spills away and gets close to the property lines, you know, we set, we establish regulations on how intense that light can be at those property lines. You know, it varies between those that are commercial versus if you have adjacent residential properties. It talks about the height of the poles themselves. And again, as we, and again, we've dealt with, it just seems like over the last six to 12 months, we've dealt with a variety of numerous issues that have come up. And, you know, we think having this in place now will certainly give our staff and our inspectors, you know, a tangible means to be able to accurately go out and assess exactly what the lighting conditions are at a site. So, again, we're asking today consideration of this proposed ordinance for approval.
And I believe when we had the first discussion, I believe Mr. Auletta and Mr. Holmes were at commissioner training on that day, and that's one of the reasons why, too, it needed to be brought back so they would have an opportunity to weigh in on it as well. Does any board member have a question? Mr. Auletta?
Mike, the, two major ones that come to mind that we've worked on, one for sure that we've worked on is Mount Olive. Does the shielding and directed downward, is that going to, in essence, be the same thing that became the solution or the attempted solution? Or is that something?
Well, in the case of, you know, Mount Olive is one most recent example, those lights were encased in a shielding, we added an additional shield. And by adding that additional shield, when they went back and did a new photometric grid report, it reduced the amount of lighting at the property line, I believe, Bert, to zero?
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
It should be seen.
Right. I think it was at point, it was at point seven, point eight, so looking at reducing the light intensity at the property line down to a minimum of 0.5, which seems to be the industry standard.
But is this language here, would it, if it was in place, would it have required that solution to have been put in place prior to going out there and all the time that was spent? Or is this just going back to exactly what was there prior?
No, it would have required, the biggest change from that standpoint, what they did to help mitigate the problem, because what they had, what they did have some spillage, I think they were in excess of 0.5 foot candles at the property line. So they would be required to take whatever measures they felt were appropriate to reduce that, the light intensity at the property line. Now, in their case, they've gone, they've moved forward and added an additional shielding to restrict some of the lighting. So whether it's additional shielding, lower wattage bulbs, whatever they need to do to make sure that at that property line, the light intensity did not exceed, I think we're calling it, adjacent to residential properties, 0.5 foot candles.
That was my.
So it would have addressed it. We would have, I guess, a stronger regulation to go back in and say, listen, you have to, you know, by our code, you have to meet, the light intensity cannot be beyond 0.5 foot candles at the property line. Now, how they go about achieving that would be, you know, they'd have some options.
As far as grandfathering and whatever else, if this gets approved, and they, let's say that problem still existed and they had voluntarily done what they're doing.
Right.
Would they be grandfathered to allow it the way it is, or would this ordinance now then be placed in front of them and say, you need to fix this?
And again, it doesn't specifically address it, I don't believe, but I don't, I don't think it would cover any grandfathering in this case. Those that were approved prior to the adoption of this ordinance would still be held under, you know, I think at the time, it was, all lighting should be downcast of moderate brightness, something along those lines. We didn't, again, so those that were permitted and approved prior to the adoption of this ordinance, if it is adopted, you know, will still be bound by those previous regulations.
The other is, over at Westridge, we had an issue with the clubhouse. Is this, well, if there being grandfather, I guess it won't fix it, but if, how is that particular issue to that homeowner with that light going into their residence? How is this, any of these changes here going to fix that, then?
And we did, you know, that was one of the issues that we wanted to make sure we did look at addressing. In their case, the light in question was coming from a clubhouse.
Correct.
So what we required would be that they would have to submit a plan for clubhouse structures within a residential subdivision, because a lot of it is, you know, we associate this type of ordinance with commercial property. But, you know, in that case, it was a, not necessarily, it's an ancillary use for residential property, and we wanted to address, and that's also addressed in here, I don't want to see exactly what the language is. But it speaks to addressing lighting and the requirement of a plan for ancillary uses on residential property such as a clubhouse structure or, and, again, let me find.
To my knowledge, that one has not been fixed, rectified at this time. Where's the one at, where's the one at Mount Olive is?
Yeah, I believe the one at Westridge has gone through the court systems, and I think the court has made a ruling in regards to that issue, and I hadn't heard anything back on that.
And it was based on our existing ordinance at the time, which is, the ruling that was made by the judge was based on not being able to find something with the ordinance that allowed them to rule that way supposedly. So again, this being put in place, as you're saying, then their court ruling will stand, and this will not affect them, and they will continue to allow, be allowed to be different.
Yeah, I don't believe this motion, or this action today, this ordinance, would have any bearing on what's previously been in place and been approved. But going forward, we will have tools in place to be able to regulate, to make sure issues like that don't occur in the future.
I understand fixing the problem.
I understand.
For the future, I just am concerned for those homeowners out there that are sitting there saying, we're acknowledging the problem, but we can't fix it. And I understand the reasons you're saying that.
You know, and we have, I know, I know our code enforcement director has been out there on numerous occasions, a number of, myself and other staff members have been out there trying to work with the two parties, and, again, I don't know if it's still, if they're still having conversations about it or not, but we try to get them together to come to a solution on that one.
Actually, they were waiting to see whether we would change an ordinance, do something with the ordinance. That was pretty much where they were at last fall, realizing something would be done in that regard. And of course, what you're basically saying is, it won't affect them, and I can understand based on prior permitting and so on. But anyways, okay. Those are the two major, I had a couple others as well, but I think they're covered already, taken care of. Thank you.
Any one?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dave.
Ms. Spile. Mr. Auletta?
The citizens always retain the right to pursue private civil remedies. I know that's not appeasing a lot of times when they're looking to the government to sort of take specific action, but I just wanted to let you know that to the extent any person is aggrieved by the lights, if it's injurious to their use and enjoyment of their property, then they have private civil remedies and they can pursue.
The one, the homeowner, or the owner, rather, of that structure, who has already been in court and has been basically given approval to have the lighting they have, how are they going to go to court, waste their money, go to court to have somebody say, this has already been ruled on, and therefore your civil suit has no merit?
The fire action, court action to which you refer, is a criminal citation that was issued in the magistrate court of our county, and this is properly more a civil action. And so the property owners reserve the right, retain the right, to pursue civil remedies to the extent any exists, and I don't know that they exist, but to the extent that they do exist, then they can pursue that route, regardless of what happened in the criminal case.
Okay. So basically, they may have taken it to the wrong court and to have an opportunity to get it rectified, they need to check that. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else with a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, this is a public hearing to amend an ordinance of the ULDC, and I'd ask at this time if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in reference to this item. All right, if not, you have before you a resolution to amend the Unified Land Development Code to add Section 4.01.09, the outdoor lighting standards, and I will look to someone for a motion. Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
A motion to approve by Mr. Alata and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, January 16th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Tuesday, January 17th, at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular board meeting. Monday, February the 6th, at 9 a.m., and Tuesday, February 7th, at 9 a.m., we have regular board meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, or land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Holder.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.